All right, I guess it's a five. Let's go ahead and call Village Board to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think everyone for their attendance. The minutes can reflect attendance of various trustees and staff. Let's move on to item three. Another motion to approve the 217 Village Board meeting minutes and to file the 1111 2019 Police and Fire Commission and the 1222 2020 Park and Rec meeting minutes as presented. Make your motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. As always, comments, questions, clarifications on the minutes. Very non-informed favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. So on item five, business presented by the President, Pam.
Item four.
Item four. Anybody in the audience who should be heard on a non-agenda item? Okay, thank you very much. Item five, Pam, who wants to give a very brief overview of the 2019 tourism promotion and development.
So you all, please take your copy. I have just a couple of things that I wanted you to see hard copy. I did include this in your packet, but there are some great things that are happening with our tourism promotion, our special events and tourism promotion coordinator. She's really become very innovative in her approach to trying to put grafton on the map in as many ways as she can. She has developed some tours, a brand, very has been strategic in trying to decide how she wants to help market our community on the tourism side as a whole. So the logo, the colors, the fonts, all of that. I know that doesn't sound like a big deal, but it is a really big deal because she's been working really hard on bringing us together in a much more cohesive way, which I'm very excited about. So those are, that's just some examples of a couple of things she's created. We printed those in house. We did it, you know, we just did it on our shoestring, but as we get better and bigger and do more, we will spend a little more on those kinds of publications. One of the things I just want to point out to you in our report relative to the budgeting, there is a discrepancy, just so you know. There's a gap between certainly what we budgeted and what we spent. We spent much less than what we budgeted for a couple of reasons, and I just wanted to clarify for you. Our staff have changed in 2019, 20. So I had, I was without two people for a little bit of time, and the two new people that we acquired are being paid significantly less. So salaries were impacted, you know, I guess in a good way or in a bad way, depending on how you look at it. If we were fully staffed and fully employed, we certainly would've spent probably eight or nine more thousand dollars on salaries than we did.
Pam?
Yes.
When I was looking at it, I noticed that the January 1st through December 30th column, the net room and the farmer's market, that total.
It's backwards, isn't it?
Doesn't quite.
No, not even a little.
So I don't know if you wanted to.
Thank you. I didn't add right, or I didn't show you right. So that is what it should be, 271-604-79 plus 15.
I figured.
Thank you. Remember that math is not my greatest strength. I'm really nice, and I do have really good people who know how to take care of it much better than I do. But we were around 283,000 for our income, and then in our expenses, we were, I'm sorry, other way around. We were 283 in our income, and we were at 198 in our expenses. So the bottom is correct, the top was incorrect. It was incorrect. And also, just to clarify, this is the first year that we stepped back and said, we're going to see a full year of the actual year, as opposed to taking the fourth quarter from last year and quarter one, two, three from this year. We're waiting, and so I'm here later this year because we waited to see what this real full year looked like. So this is our first real full year of three hotels, full boat, all performing 12 months in a row. We were afraid, I was afraid, to be honest with you. You don't really know what it's going to look like at any given time, and so I was very nervous. I'm very frugal, so I get nervous about spending too much too soon. We now feel better, more confident. We'll have two or three more better years to project what it looks like in terms of our spending. So what that means in all honesty is we'll be able to spend more on direct tourism promotion and development. So we will work harder on spending more money on developing and creating better assets for our community. Some of those that I highlighted in the packet were the idea of an RFP that's gone out now for the development of a park at the Blue's Marker site. I'm really excited about what that could do for us, just as a community and for our residents, but more importantly, for tourists and really making it a place where people will, we have people who come in our office all the time wanting to see where, wanting to know where the Blue's Marker is. They've traveled the entire Mississippi Blue's Trail, started in Mississippi, came all the way up, wanted to find Culvers, and then want to know where the trail is. This is the truth. And then we might point out where it is, but, you know, it's a marker, and it's about this date. We really, this is our history, and this is what we want to be done for. We really need to do better at that. And the way that interactive parks and features are now, the idea that you could walk up and touch a board that would talk to you and tell you the history, that you could look at interactive video visions throughout and sculptures or whatever, is very exciting. The idea that we have an opportunity to develop that water access and to have a better way to reach that water. My friends in Park and Rec say the best fishing for grafton is in that area, but it's really not accessible and not safe. So the opportunity to sort of redevelop that is very exciting for us, number one. Number two, we know that one of the greatest assets for our county is in our trail. We know that one of the untapped ways that it's been used in our community, that it's been very untapped and used in our community. So looking at ways to better market, to better indicate where you are on the trail, and then indicate, now you're on the trail, but over there are five restaurants. Now you're on the trail, and over there are restrooms. Now you're on the trail, and over there is parking. We've got some little signage in a lot of places. We need vendor signage in every place. So we want to improve that. We want to look at really investing money in making the trail a real asset in our community. We believe that if we start this globally, that our other neighboring communities will follow suit and will improve their signage, and everybody will up their game. We did receive a GEM grant, which you heard about for two years. Are working on receiving a GEM joint effort marketing grant from the state Department of Tourism, and that was a cooperative effort with County Parks and Ozakia County Tourism. What that has done has upped the marketing and website and all of the promotion of the trail in what they call the shoulder season, which is off-season. So September to March or April or May or June, depending on what we want to call it when we see the sunshine again. But this, maybe today is a shoulder season. That will end. But so we did receive that grant. What it did was it did really give us more exposure. We received an email today from someone who thanked us as a resident of the county, thanked us and heard on public radio that Ozakia County Tourism and the county has done some, is making some efforts to improve the trail and promote the trail. And thank you, my tax dollars are being well spent, is what he said. He doesn't really understand that they're not his tax dollars, but it was nice that we, they did hear it on public radio. So we've purchased advertising on public radio. We've shared in that cost. We've purchased advertising, listen on TMJ over the next couple of months on Saturday mornings. John here does some reporting, and there you're going to hear, the next one will be about St. Patrick's Day. If anybody's got anything special going on in grafton on St. Patrick's Day, we haven't found anything really unique to promote specifically on that day, but we're calling around to find the right things to promote. But our county will be featured. So those are the kinds of initiatives that are working on that GEM grant, from that GEM grant side. Any questions? I could go on and on, as you know, or I could stop, whatever you like. I hope you're listening to our podcast. We also are knowing that those are reaching some really unique places, Switzerland and Germany and Cleveland. I mean, it's just really strange to see the reported on that. But our listenership is growing. Adelise led, Jason M. Ludes was at the rep, is at the rep right now. We did promote that event, and we had almost 20 people who took a bus and went down and saw the production this past weekend. So we had a podcast with the director, some of the actors, Angela Mack, who, as you all know probably, was really the person that uncovered the Blue's history in our community. And we've had a lot of great listenership as a result of that. And people at the performance on Saturday, I always have an opportunity to say to them, if you really want to know about the history, listen to our podcast. And there were people who were writing down and trying to find out more about that. So all of that is exciting for us.
Pam, you mentioned about the Irish. There's a event coming on March 10, the Library history of Irish people in Milwaukee.
Thank you. March 10. At all, I agree.
Whatever it is.
Thanks. That helps a lot.
John, it's good. John Hanson's got a brochure with some Irish stuff you may want to stuff.
It is quite Irish, aren't it, sure?
Yeah, yeah. I think there is in our county. You know, it's always interesting. A radio station reaches out and says, I want you to talk about everything blue in your city, and I want to hear about its color models. You know, they don't give any time. The parameters are really narrow, and so you're trying to find the right fit for, to make it pop. So anything we can do is always good, but we do, we did that very short.
Pam, do you feel like the tax will be a lot more because of the DMC?
Definitely.
Against the golf.
Definitely. I think we know that we won't have more stays. We are already full during most times, but we will have highest rack rate on those stays. So we know that for the DNC, they're booked, and they're booked three weeks. So our hotels, the Hampton Inn and Tom Place for sure, held out for the three-week stays. The people were coming the week before, the week of, and the week after. So those groups were news and security. So there is some news something. I don't know what it was. I think Amanda said English news BBC or something. And it really didn't add up. The neat thing is if they accommodate the week ahead, they stay the week of, and they stay till the week after. So that's three times more, as opposed to if we were, while it would be great to have state delegation, nobody really, not very many people in the state of Wisconsin are going to have state delegations because they're all going to be south. It would've been cool, but we're really going to probably do better. But we aren't really going to see, we've been to about three different briefings about the convention. We're probably not going to see a huge impact here, other than our hotels. People who participate in the convention are locked in from morning till night. They, they, they don't get back until 10 or 11, and if they are out of the convention, they're at convention activities downtown. So, you know, they're telling us, well, tell your us for us to stay up until 11. That's not going to happen here. And if I were us, I'd probably wouldn't do it either. And open earlier, and I probably wouldn't do that either because people want to get down to the activity.
What about the effect of the golf?
We don't know. I mean, we're certainly booked for it. The last time, we didn't see great impact. We didn't see huge spending here because people are all excited about going to the event. I think our golf courses do better because people, you know, they get, my husband watches for now and says, okay, now we need to go golf because I'm going to try that swing. So we think, you know, we will see some. We don't know yet either. There are, we're looking at what opportunities to promote grafton there will be relative to that. We haven't seen a lot of ad opportunities yet. They'll probably be pretty expensive, but we will take advantage of them just because we know that the 43 corridor is so highly trafficked, and we know that people will, this will be a stop, this will be an easy stop for anyone between, and just the number of courses here and the quality of our courses and the diversity in our courses will be a draw for people. We did some stuff with Emeralds last year. We spent some money on advertising there. I don't know if we saw a great return on that. Again, if any of these events happened in November, December, January, February, they would be huge impact for us. But we're already full at the times of these events. So it's really hard to judge, other than they're paying full rack rate, the difference.
That thing from the Library is from the Emerald Isle to the Cream City.
Okay, anybody else have comments for Pam?
I have a couple of questions. Right. Not only is your income number off, but your expenses are off also. I put it into Excel, and it was actually 202,315.27.
So that, when you're saying that, I can see how I did that.
202. 202, 315, and 27 cents. So the difference between your income and your expenses is like $74,000. Where is that?
So that money will, as you've done on the bottom, where it's a restricted fund, we budgeted 32,000 restricted funds. The rest of it will go back to restricted funds, and all of that will go into a long-term, potential long-term expenses.
Okay, so what, what, what program do you use for keeping your books?
Chamber, um, quick books.
Use quick, okay. So is there any way we can get reports out of QuickBooks? Because I would really like to see like the actual numbers, like what went to Celebrate Grafton?
What went to Celebrate Grafton was $16,000, which had helped the contract before. That's in our room tax tourism agreement with the village. So 16,000.
15,000 just for general, and then a thousand for the fireworks.
From the village. That's really, it was just a pass. So that's what goes to Celebrate Grafton. Period. That's all. And then the fireworks goes to the fireworks, not to Celebrate Grafton.
Well, no, and here it says the chamber donated $30,000 to Celebrate Grafton for the fireworks.
So it pays for the fireworks. It doesn't pay for anything else in Celebrate Grafton. It pays for the fireworks.
Okay, so who runs Celebrate Grafton?
Celebrate Grafton.
No, but like who are the people?
The president is John. The treasurer is Jim. The vice president is Matt Sifter. The secretary is Kim.
So John is the president. This Joe?
Yeah, I volunteer for that too.
Okay, so according to the.
Do you want to address the board?
Can you just email it to me? That would be great. In the agreement, it says for reporting that quarterly reports will be published?
I'm happy to do that. Jesse and I have worked on clarifying and repairing sort of a gap in me receiving money quarterly. So you didn't receive reporting because I didn't receive money. So now we've got a much better tax and balance system. I have no problem doing that.
Okay.
It's not our thing. I just didn't have the money to show you.
Okay, so of the 271,604,79, that's all room tax money. Okay, so that's tax money. So we should be able to see a full accounting of.
Room tax. It's not, it's not my tax money. It's the people who stay in hotels.
But it's tax money that the government makes people pay, and it funnels through the village to go to you.
The village is obligated to spend that money on tourism. We can't use it to build roads.
Right, but I've been asking for months to get some kind of.
Celebrate Grafton is a 501(c)(3). Celebrate Grafton is a totally separate entity. We've chosen the Tourism Promotion Development Committee. Two things happened. We agreed to continue the village's expenses for that. The, we don't need to do that. If the village wants to take that out of our agreement, we'll stop doing that, and we'll spend the money on something else. But that's something we carried over because the village had done it for, however, when Celebrate Grafton started. So there were some things that we agreed to continue, and the Christmas parade is another one that we continued that. That was designated as tourism promotion expenditures that the village had incurred prior to our agreement, and so we assumed them and carried them on. But we, that's the, we did that because that was an agreement we made with the village. That wasn't what the chamber did before that. That is what the village did before that.
Well, my point is that it's sales tax dollars, so there should be some kind of accounting. No, I don't have it. This, this doesn't add up, Pam.
Okay, well, we can, we can fix that. I'm assuming that that can be done.
I'm not going to show you the money that's there in reserve. That's, that's not a problem.
But it should be.
All right, so the request is obviously to maybe get this a little bit accurate, and then maybe get that over to Jesse, and he can distribute that for the group. Regarding.
My mistake. I'm sorry. I, you know, I.
Regarding the other items that, regarding tourism promotion, anything for Pam? All right, well, thanks a lot, Pam. Nice job. Again, as always, say congrats to the team, Adelise and the rest. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item six, Resolutions, Ordinance, and Action Items. Item one is out of Park and Rec. Actually, they both are. One is a motion to approve the Friends Group use of three facility rentals per year, a meeting room at the municipal services facility 20 times per year, and access to support staff and resource, office resources to exclude posters to be reviewed annually be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. I read the minutes, John, and you want to kind of give us the 30,000 foot view?
Sure. We've been thinking about this for a long time. We finally found an individual to run this Friends Group. You have to have somebody to lead it, so we have somebody to lead it. We presented it as such to try to keep this, to keep this separate from the village. Paul Stedhars reviewed this. He did a worksheet from the state. So the way we've set up now, it will be completely separate from the village. This group will do all of its events and things, events, and any funds raised will go towards something that is needed in the park. Maybe not so much needed, but might be a wish list type thing, because we have capital improvement that takes care of our needs. This would be more of a wish list group, and anything, we would work closely with the Park and Rec Board and not do anything that wasn't, you know, that wasn't given a blessing. And so that's kind of the direction we're going to have with that.
Okay, questions for John?
I just have one. So is that also a 503B?
We will be a 501(c)(3), yes.
501(c)(3), which is the same as Celebrate Grafton.
Correct.
Any other questions for John? Okay.
Will that group be required to provide financials?
That group is not required to show the village. A 501(c)(3) is not required to show financials to the village. We are asking.
I don't know what it is, but Celebrate Grafton gets tax dollars and.
All right, that being said, a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Show and min. So on item two, motion to enter an agreement subject to final review by legal counsel of the Grafton Lions Club to repay $50,000 over a 10-year period at $4,500 per year for improvements to Grafton's Lions Park. Be implemented in 2021, be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Jesse?
Certainly. So before the committee this evening is a cost share agreement or memorandum of understanding, which sets forth a funding mechanism whereby the village would utilize fund banks in its park facility fund to provide payments towards infrastructure projects within Lions Park. That being said, the Grafton Lions Club would be facilitating those improvements through oversight and project management. What this memorandum of understanding does is really looks to set forth expectations with regards to the projects that are being proposed, the funding involved, the payback schedule, because as we know, over time, faces change, names change, and that way, there's nothing left to question over time. That being said, it also sets forth the monetary amount to be repaid and what the in-kind services that would be accepted towards that balance do. So it's very specific in that nature as well. Another facet of this is looking at a conservative approach here to really ensure the integrity of this process, as we do have village board members that are current Lions Club members. So there is a section of state statutes that speaks to taking official action on a matter in which you gain benefit or have substantial financial interest. Well, there is that initial outlay of funds by project. One could say that Lions Club benefits. That being said, we want to be very clear and upfront that what we are looking for this evening and recommending to the board is that the current Lions Club members abstain their vote with the remaining trustees who are not current Lions Club members voting. So the clarification here is that we have a quorum of the board to meet, so therefore, the matter can be taken up. By abstaining, that is a vote on the matter, but it is a neutral, non-binding vote. Mike, please correct me if I'm wrong on that. But that said, the remaining members that are not Lions Club members, board members that are not Lions Club members, would be voting, and that will determine the outcome of the action on this particular matter.
Yeah, this was, we wanted, your administrator and I wanted to bring the law to your attention. This is a sort of an ethics violation that jumps out at you. Obviously, none of the members up here who are Lions Club members are going to gain financially from this, nor is the Lions Club going to gain financially. In fact, it's binding itself to reimburse the village for these park improvements.
But you have this quirky section of the law, 1959(c)(1) that says prohibit, seems to prohibit a local public official from taking action on anything in which the official or an organization which the official is associated with has a substantial financial interest. So as your administrator explained, we thought here on the side of caution, we'd make you aware of it, and the Lions Club members may wish to abstain. Fair enough. Questions?
I've got two.
I, okay. No. Sure, okay. So the first thing I want to ask about is, do you think into the motion we should enter the fact that there's, this also includes $5,000 of in-kind?
You may. It is spelled out in the view, but absolutely.
Yeah, but it's not as a motion. And it would lead somebody to believe it would be $50,000 that's being paid over, you know, 4,500 per year.
Correct. The recommendation coming from Park and Rec does read just that way. If the board wishes to make the motion to denote the in-kind services, that would be appropriate, absolutely.
Okay, that's my first comment. The second comment is, I, I understand that it seems like you're trying to be really careful to have the Lions members not vote, but yet, you know, we're talking about that they have a substantial financial interest, which they really don't. I mean, they're, in essence, borrowing the money from the village, using it, adding things to a village-owned park that the village owns, that it looks like from looking at the memorandum of understanding, that the village is going to be pretty involved with. John's going to be involved, and then the next director will be involved daily, weekly, like it's a village project. So, I mean, to get, you know, to have this in-between stage is very odd to me. I mean, I don't feel they have any kind of financial interest. They're going out of their way to do public service for the community and add these amenities to the village. I don't understand why the village just doesn't pay for it outright. And it does look like the village will be participating, public works, Park and Rec. It just seems a little busy to me. Is it really necessary that we do this?
I see your point. I mean, as explained, it was the most conservative. If there can, if a board member wants to avoid any appearance or argument of impropriety, you can feel free to abstain. Okay.
I have two questions. Aren't we setting quite an interesting precedent here by acting as the bank for the Lions Club for this? I mean, are we going to get other groups who want to come and borrow money from the village now?
And I guess with that, any individual request would be reviewed by a committee level. This was purposely taken, taken through Park and Rec Committee and brought to the board. And that, looking back at the history of Lions Club involvement here in the community, that played into bringing this forward. But again, it was brought through committee for just that reason, to look at what the request, what the history of the group was, and to make a recommendation.
So when did this come before Park and Rec? Was it just this last meeting?
Last month's meeting.
Back since November, wasn't it?
Officially, the last meeting, but it's been, I'd have to correctly remember, but it's been there twice before it was officially talked about with this.
Yes, as I recall, the topic was discussed at the Park and Rec Committee meeting, and then the formal memorandum of understanding was brought back at the last meeting, last month's meeting.
Okay, because I went online and found the Lions, Grafton Lions Board of Directors meeting minutes from September. meeting minutes from September, and it says, quote, "The fifty thousand dollar loan is being approved through the village." So it, to me, it seems like it's a done deal, or it was a done deal back then.
I can't speak to the discussions they had at the meeting.
They might not have a financial interest personally, but I think as far as a conflict of interest, this definitely does not pass the front page test.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, as past president of the Lions and as also the secretary who wrote that, I believe what we were stating is that we were going to see if we would work with the village board for approval. Can also state that this is not a precedence. The Grafton Lions have borrowed money from the village in the past for projects like this. In addition, they paid over two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I believe, for the naming rights for the Grafton Lions Park. In addition, currently, every year, they're putting in trees for that park and improving the park on an ongoing basis. And it's just, I think, more so for community involvement, trustee might even, than really anything. It's just the way of being able to say it's something that we would like to do for the village.
Yeah, the village can't speak to whatever the Lions put in their minutes. You can't speak to that. And as to the sniff test, I, I mean, the whole reason we brought nineteen fifty-nine in front of you was to point out this quirk in the law that talks about something you're voting on with a group that might have a substantial interest in. But I don't think there's an argument that any board member is going to gain financially from this, or that the Lions Club are even going to gain. They're doing this, I think, as a public service for the park system. So, but as we've indicated, you should, you should feel, if you feel the need to take a conservative approach, we have said, feel free to abstain.
John, did the Lions come to you and say, what can we do to make the park better?
Yes, if I, to, just to clarify everything, so this has happened several times in the mass. It's been done with a handshake and an entry in the finance director's computer. So now was the time to put this on paper, so there was a document to go back to as far as the agreement went. I think when the Lions first came and started talking about it, there was a possible assumption that it was going to be that handshake and an entry in the finance director's computer. But I think the time is now to put pen to paper and have an official agreement, and that's where we're at right now. So whatever conversations they were having, I think they were operating under the assumption that it was going to happen the way it did in ninety-five, the way it did in two thousand. We were going to do a similar handshake agreement again in twenty-twenty. But I think this is a better option because now there is paper that you can go backtrack and see exactly what the agreement was.
The initial, about when we started the park, we started my money and we get it off before we, that we would.
Yes, for sure. So there's never been issues that way, and then when they were starting discussions in September, like I said, I think they were just under, they were operating under that it was going to happen the way that it has always happened, but here we are, and I think this is a better option.
Well, there's nothing wrong with the way it's being presented. I think when you have a civic organization like the Lions that's willing to donate, you know, basically fifty thousand dollars worth of park improvements, that, that comes directly from, you know, the Park and Open Space Fund. That's, that's funded through, through new construction. So those are dollars that could be spent on other parks, you know, like the new Southeast Park, you know, and things like that. So I, and I mean, I, I think this is a win-win for everybody. I mean, and obviously it adds improvements to the Lions Park. It certainly sets aside fifty thousand dollars for improvements in other community parks. And it's just, again, another show of a partnership with our, one of our prime premier civic groups. I, I don't really see downside to this.
Well, the downside is that the majority of the members of the village board are also Lions, so it just...
Right, and I think Mike has addressed that. So it will be up to everybody to vote however they feel fit, but we have enough people here that are not of the Lions that can, can think this won't happen one way or the other. But I do want to, since we do have a motion for the people who made the motion in the second, are they okay with adding to repay the fifty thousand dollars over a ten-year period at forty-five hundred dollars per year plus five thousand dollars in in-kind services to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, final questions on this item?
Sorry, Mr. President, I would actually recommend a roll call vote, just to be bluntly clear on how the vote is taken.
Yeah, well...
When we get there, George, didn't mean to...
All right, any, any final questions on this item? All right, motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And against?
Nay.
And all abstain?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes two to one, three upsides. All right, let's move onwards. I have seven department and officers reports. Jesse, you want to give us your update?
Absolutely. Unfortunately, coming out of Madison, there has been a stall in any sort of dark store legislation. This is, been an ongoing effort between the local municipalities, reaching out to the state-level legislators to look to get on the books, the ability to close the big box appraisal loophole where in some communities appraisal, appraised values, or assessed values, excuse me, assessed values have been challenged under the theory that this building is clearly worth less because it is empty. And other states have passed this, Michigan most notably, our closest neighbor. But that said, back in the fall of twenty eighteen, the village board did pass a resolution urging the state to do something on this front. And unfortunately, I just received report from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities that all efforts on any dark store legislation have stalled and will not be taken up during this legislative period. So we will continue to keep trying to send word to the state and apply pressure as much as we can from the local level to get something on the books to help us with that. On some happy news, tomorrow is a swearing-in ceremony for our new police officer, John Gallenbeck, nine AM at the police department. He is our newest police officer who will be filling the vacancy left by the retirement of Officer Myler. The Police and Fire Commission has set forth a timetable with regards to closing the recruitment for the police chief position. They are looking to conduct interviews throughout the course of this month of March with final interviews and appointment in April. So that process continues to move forward. The last item I do have for the board this evening is, we do have our next election coming up in about four weeks, in early April. With that spring election, there is also the presidential preference on the ballot. In-person absentee voting opens on March twenty-third. One nuance of this election being held on the Tuesday is that the second board meeting in April will be April twenty-first, which is a Tuesday, not the regular Monday, and that is in accord with the election schedule. And so again, just want to put the reminder out there that the second board meeting in April is actually Tuesday, April twenty-first.
All right, any questions for Jesse or John? Anything you have to add?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Page? All right, nice update, thank you much. All right, let's move on to item eight.
Mr. President, I have the, from, from the administrative, the, on behalf of the staff, questions have been raised to your administrator and I about the status of the open records litigation, so I thought I would give a little update to the board at this time. As, as many board members know, the court granted summary judgment, Circuit Court Judge Williams granted summary judgment in favor of the village to all claims brought against Chief Rice for the claims regarding improper withholding of records. The court granted summary judgment in favor of the village to all claims but one that were brought against the village administrator. The court then reviewed certain emails that were withheld based on attorney-client privilege. That review was done in camera, meaning outside of the public's viewing, and elected to release certain records either in full, some of the records in full or in redacted format. The court, then later, the court denied a motion by the petitioner for attorney's fees, costs, and disbursements, and that was based on the court's finding that the petitioner did not substantially prevail. As of February twenty-one, an appeal's been filed in that, in that litigation. I thought it would provide the board with a, some understanding of a timeline for the appeal. The circuit court will have to file a record of all the goings-on that occurred in the, in the circuit court matter with the accord of appeals. That'll, that'll happen at about the end of March. Then the appellant will have a, have to file the first brief, and that will be due early May-ish, and then the, the village will get a chance to file a closing brief thirty days later. This has all been handled by insurance counsel, and we anticipate possibly having a closed session on the matter maybe after the, after the first brief is filed as we get deeper into the spring.
All right, thank you for that update. All right, let's move on. There are no licenses. Let's move on to item nine, entertain a motion for the approval of village expenditures, one hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars, fourteen cents, be approved.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion second. As always, comments, questions on the bills?
Yes. I've got some for Chief Grissom, but maybe Jesse, you can. Page four. Grafton Mobile. An oil change and tire rotation for ninety, ninety dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that seems way out of whack.
As far as whether it's a synthetic oil used...
Still too high.
I, I do not know the pricing of Grafton Mobile. That said, I do know that our departments do look to utilize our public works mechanic as best we can. However, there are clearly times where he's tied up with other maintenance issues that something like an oil change or tire rotation simply cannot be fit in a normal timely workday. And so with that, we will utilize Grafton Mobile. Not aware of what the, I guess, their pricing is, but we can look into that.
No, I have one more. Page two. Three-quarters of the way down, Patrick Brock. He got meal reimbursement for fifty-four dollars. Want to explain that?
That would be over the course of several days. I do not have a breakdown with me, but would be able to provide that as all employees who request any sort of reimbursement, I think, provide the receipts.
That's over a couple of days, you're saying?
Yeah.
If that's a couple of days, I get it. I thought it was a one-time shot.
No.
Okay, you have questions on the bills?
Yes. Page six, JT Engineering. Is this the annual leaves, I mean, seventeen thousand, I heard fifty-four dollars. Is this the end of the engineering?
Yes, I spoke with Director Thomas this afternoon, and this is the last invoice overseeing the utility installations in the River Bend Meadows subdivision. This is the subdivision directly adjacent to Port Washington Road, which will include the new community park. That said, this, we'll close out that contract with JT Engineering, and then we will have different inspectors on site for the road installation later this spring.
Then on page twelve. Monthly boarding fee for the Humane Society?
When the police department does obtain a stray animal, we do turn them over to the Humane Society. The specifics of how that boarding fee is calculated, I would have to research, but that said, we basically don't want to keep them in the department or in the cruiser or in the garage. And so if, if they're not claimed in, in very quick order, the stray animal will be turned over to the Humane Society.
I have a few. Page two of the first patch, the Blue Sten acquisition. I'm assuming that's a development cost of thirty-three thousand dollars?
Correct, and that is a, the cost for a fixed asset of upsizing the water mains within the, sections of the water mains within that development. By the development agreement, a certain size of water main is dictated within the development. When oversizing is required, the village is bound to pay the differential, and that is that differential payment. And it is a fixed asset, therefore there is no department listed.
Page six, also I have the question about JT Engineering. So you're saying this will be the last payment, and can you let us know how much the total amount was?
Certainly.
The other issue is, I know going forward, they'll be using somebody else.
Correct. And if I may, trustee Harbeck, what I can do is report to the board what the awarded contract was in total and what was spent. I'll provide the...
I think the awarded was a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That sounds correct. And I know we are not near that, but regardless, I will report those numbers to the board, certainly.
Okay, and just to be clear, I will be voting no on this for the conflict of interest related to Director Thomas and her husband who works for the company. Page eight. Eric Nirode, expense reimbursement, that's all it says, training and conferences. Is he an employee? I'm sorry, no.
Page, yes. Eric Nirode works in our utility. In particular, this is a sewer utility charge, and the reason for the department description being listed the way it is, that we actually had it set up in our system to match the accounting description set forth by the Public Service Commission. That's why it doesn't specifically say sewer utility under the department. But that is a training reimbursement. I'm assuming a registration fee for Mr. Nirode to attend training.
Okay, and my last question, page nine. Similar to trustee Miller's question, Schmidt Brothers Auto, Police Department Vehicle Maintenance. The, the vehicles from twenty seventeen, repair wiper for a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Is that under warranty? Is that, that seems like a lot of money to repair a wiper.
Sure. Let me verify the details of that repair, and I can report back to the board.
And that's it for me.
Okay, any other questions? All right, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Show a nay. Item ten, let's take, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We are adjourned.